Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
We begin our meetings with an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comments on each item for three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. If anyone has a comment to be made at this time, please approach the microphone and state your name and address prior to making your comment. Seeing none, we will move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Milfeld. Is there any Board discussion of the consent agenda? Any community comment? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
That brings us to recognitions. Mr. Kroner?
Thank you. Twenty-nine members of the Wauwatosa East High School Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA team, have qualified to compete in the State Leadership Conference competition in April. East High School competed in the Regional Leadership Conference on February 5th. In addition to the twenty-nine students who qualified for the state conference, the eighty-five -member East High School FBLA team competed against thirty schools and finished third overall in the region. At the regional competition, students compete in business-related competitions from accounting to marketing and network design. Students compete in groups and individually, depending on the event. The students from East High School that qualified for the state competition are: Patrick Nellen, Jake Robarge, and Zach Peterson, Banking and Financial Systems, second place; Olivia Rebholz, Business Communications, first place; Livy Krego, Angela Gilman, and Emily Jensen, Business Ethics, first place; Quinn Pasha Kewitz and Joe Telder, Business Financial Plan, second place; Maddy Fisher, Business Law, second place; Chelsea Latham and Angela Parrish, Business Presentation, third place; Morgan Maxwell, Computer Applications, second place; Jarrett George and Jake Peterson, Digital Video Production, second place; Morgan Lucy, Healthcare Administration, second place; Kevin Carricker, Intro to Technology Concepts, third place; Bruce Bryce Kratzar, Matt Schmidt, and John Strobusch, Management Information Systems, second place; Chris Do, Eric Islow, and Eric Pintar, Network Design, third place; Brian Hendricks, Networking Concepts, third place; Alex Conway, Kyle Doby, Joey Hayes, and Nick Monabach, Partimentary Procedure, second place; and Samantha Stone, Public Speaking, too, first place. Students from Wauwatosa West High School also took part in the regional competition. Those students were Andrew Jacob Boots, Accounting One, Keshada Fisher, Computer Applications; Dan Engel, Personal Finance; Beth Pierce, Desktop Publishing; Katie Kreese, Desktop Publishing; Erica Gonzalez, Healthcare Administration; Stuart Vanderveld, Personal Finance; and Keith Brown, Sports Management. The Wisconsin FBLA State Leadership Conference will be held April 11th and 12th in Appleton. FBLA is the national organization for all secondary school students participating in business education programs. It functions as an integral part of the instructional program of the business education curriculum in secondary schools.
In memory of his son, Jack, Mike, and Judy Doyle has set up the Jack Doyle Memorial Scholarship Fund in the amount of $2,000. Students from both East and West High Schools will benefit from this fund and the generosity of the Doyle family.
East High School student newspaper, The Cardinal News, has been recognized by the National Scholastic Press Association for excellence in scholastic journalism. The Cardinal News earned an All-American rating with marks of distinction in four of five NSPA critique areas. NSPA offers a critique service for newspapers, yearbooks, websites, and news, literary and feature magazines. The judges write comments and score the publication in several different categories such as coverage, writing, and design. The composite score from all sections gives the publication an honor rating ranging from third class to All-American. The All-American rating is the highest rating given to any publication in the critique service. Kelly Ansley is the editor of The Cardinal News, and the newspaper's advisor is East High School teacher, Elena Meyer.
Congratulations to each of these students, and thank you to the Doils for their continuing involvement and generosity to the students of our district. Thank you for being here tonight as well. Yes?
Maybe a good comment?
Yes, please.
Also, to the Doils, I know that in addition to this effort, you have been working extremely hard on the skateboard initiative. Also, I know in recognition of Jack's love for that, and I just would like to say that you are nothing short of inspirational to parents. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a presentation from the students involved in We the People. At the January 24th School Board meeting, the West High School We the People, the citizen and the constitution team, was recognized for winning its fourth consecutive state championship. The team will move on to compete at Nationals in Washington, DC in April. West's team is made up of students enrolled in the school's American Public Policy Special Emphasis class. The team advisor is social studies teacher Chad Matesky. The We the People program prepares students for state and national-level events with a challenging social studies and history curriculum. Several of them are here tonight to show what We the People program is all about. Mr. Matesky?
Well, I just wanted to start by thanking the School Board for allowing us to come present today, this evening, for you guys. For those of you, I don't, I'm trying to figure out who I should face here, the School Board or the people back there, but this program is an amazing program. It really makes the kids think at a very critical level. They really have to go into depth with the information that they know. And like you said, this is the fourth year in a row for us. We're very pleased each year, you know, you have to work with a new group of kids, and the energy that these kids feed off of one year after another really motivates the next incoming class. And so, this group here today is Unit Four. They are going to present a four-minute statement that they have pre-prepared, and then we will start the follow-up session. The follow-up session is where we really get to figure out, do the kids know what they're talking about? I'm going to get that started, so again, you get a feel for what it's all about, and then at some point, I will just turn it over to School Board members, whoever wants to ask a question, the audience, and we'll see if they can think on their feet here. I'll throw the disclaimer out there, they haven't competed at state since January 7th, so a little rusty maybe, but they're going to do the best they can, and they're excited to be here tonight, so, thank you. Why don't you guys go ahead and introduce yourselves?
We are all due to Wauwatosa West.
I'm Mitchell Holtman.
I'm Madalena Zimmerman.
And I'm Martha Schuster.
Today, we're going to go with question number two from the state competition. The question reads as follows: "In Federalist Seventy-Four, Alexander Hamilton claimed that the propriety of the constitutional provision making the President Commander-in-Chief of the Army and Navy was so evident in itself that little need to be said to explain or enforce it. Not everyone has agreed. What are the arguments for and against making the President the Commander-in-Chief?" Sub-question number one: Article Two, Section Two designates the President as Commander-in-Chief of the militia of the several states when called into the actual service of the United States. When and why have Presidents used this authority? Sub-question number two: How and why has the conception of the power of the Commander-in-Chief been expanding since the time of Abraham Lincoln? When you are ready, you may begin.
Article Two, Section Two, Clause One of the Constitution designates the President as Commander-in-Chief of the Army, Navy, and militia when called into service. Becoming Commander-in-Chief is a critical task and an obligation the President must undertake. Although everyone can agree our country needs a leader, some question whether the President should prevail as Commander-in-Chief. Alexander Hamilton states in Federalist Seventy-Four, "The direction of war specifically demands qualities that distinguish the exercise of power by a single hand. It is necessary that a strong and solitary leader make decisions and act quickly." The Articles of Confederation did not provide this, and the framers of the Constitution realized how imperative it was after Shay's Rebellion, as cautioned in Federalist Seventy, wherever two or more persons are engaged in any common enterprise or pursuit, there is always the danger of a difference of opinions.
There have been concerns, however, with this conception. In Cato V, it is said that the great powers of the President connected with his duration in office would lead to oppression and ruin. Some Americans fear the concentration of power into one person may lead our country into war or into an undemocratic way, as seen with Hitler's Germany, Stalin's Soviet Union, and Japan under Hageki Tojo. While the title of Commander-in-Chief has thus far proven to be a positive one, many argue that if a constitutional dictator were to assume the presidency, the individual freedoms of Americans would be at great risk. In the past, America's Presidents have used their powers as Commander-in-Chief to call up militias better known today as the National Guard.
The National Guard has been a key part of the American military since colonial beginnings. State militias made up the majority of the Army well into the 1800s, serving in the War of 1812, Mexican-American, Spanish-American, and civil wars. Lincoln, often viewed as the most influential Commander-in-Chief, called for 400,000 volunteers while taking an active role throughout the Civil War.
The National Guard was officially created as the product of the Militia Act of 1903. Woodrow Wilson federalized numerous National Guardsmen to fight in World War I, making up forty percent of American troops in France. Lyndon Johnson declared parts of Vietnam a conflict zone and deployed some 23,000 National Guardsmen to serve. More recently, President George W. Bush called up 400 National Guard units to active duty in Iraq as a response to terrorist attacks on September 11th, just as his father had done during Operation Desert Storm. Apart from wartime efforts, the Commander-in-Chief power has also been used to enforce civil rights. President Eisenhower federalized the entire Arkansas National Guard to assist in escorting nine black students into a previously segregated high school. Presidents have also used their powers to aid in humanitarian efforts after war or national disaster in places like Rwanda, Somalia, Haiti, Kuwait, and Saudi Arabia.
The founding fathers vaguely define the powers of the Commander-in-Chief in Article Two of the Constitution. During the Civil War, President Lincoln used a lack of detail to take actions he considered necessary to preserve the Union, powers that Lincoln assumed, including calling up the militia, appropriate money, suspending habeas corpus, and emancipating the slaves. Since Lincoln's time, some Presidents have used Lincoln as a model to bypass normal administrative and judicial functions. Some Presidents' deployment of the US forces without a declaration of war were controversial, as well as Franklin Roosevelt's executive order that interned Japanese-Americans during the Second World War. Teddy Roosevelt used military strength to obtain access for building the Panama Canal.
Some speculate that social and technological advancements have had an impact on expanding Commander-in-Chief powers. The Patriot Act allows law enforcement agencies to search telephones, email, and other records to find terrorists. Although the presidency has been rapidly expanding since Lincoln's time, in Federalist Sixty-Nine, Alexander Hamilton eases the fears of Americans by saying that the President will never become too powerful because of the checks existing within our government. This concludes our statement, and we're ready for your questions.
We will now move into the follow-up portion of the presentation. I'll throw out a question or two, and then I'll turn it over. You mentioned Lincoln, potentially, as maybe overstepping some of his bounds in the Civil War, but maybe he was within some bounds as well. Could you give some other examples of times where you feel the Commander-in-Chief potentially overstepped their executive powers?
Well, in 1933, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt signed into law the Neutrality Act, which stated that America would not become involved in the World War that was going on, and that we wouldn't aid in any efforts against any of the forces. However, later on that year, he actually did go against the Act that he had signed into law and sent troops to support Britain.
Also, the war in Grenada, when President Reagan decided to bring troops in and be part of this war that we had no connection to whatsoever, was a really risky move. Outsiders such as England and France, I believe, said that that was very barbaric of America. However, he continued and was part of that war.
Another example of when a President may have overstepped his bounds is President Bush's continual ignoring of the Supreme Court's ruling on the Guantanamo Bay cases.
The first of the Guantanamo Bay cases that was actually decided by the Supreme Court was Russell v. Bush, which decided that the holding cells for the detainees were actually under US jurisdiction and therefore the US Constitution applied to the holding cells.
And then following that was the case Al Odo v. U.S., and under that case, citizen, in the Fourteenth Amendment, it says persons, not citizens, and because Guantanamo Bay was part of US territory, that is why they had the right to habeas corpus and jurisdiction.
The next case following that was the case of Hamadon versus Rumsfeld, where it was the court ruled that military tribunals were unlawful because they used secret evidence that was, that the defendant was unaware of, as well as confessions made during the use of waterboarding.
However, President George W. Bush used the case Johnson v. Eisenträger, which, back in World War II, stated that German prisoners of war did not have to be held in the regular courts because they were prisoners of war. They could be held in military tribunals, and that was George Bush's argument for disregarding the Supreme Court rulings on Guantanamo Bay.
What do you think are the biggest causes leading to expansion of executive powers throughout history in our country, in your opinion?
One of the biggest contributors, excuse me, contributors to those expansions have been times when our country has been in danger, at risk, through things like war. There's a Federalist quote that states, "The powers of the President will expand the most during times of war and danger." So that was anticipated by the...
I think that another reason why presidential power has expanded is because our nation has expanded. In the time of the Louisiana Purchase, Thomas Jefferson believed, being a Democratic Republican, he was hesitant to make the Louisiana Purchase because he feared that it would give the federal government more power than the states.
Well, as stated in Hamilton's quote in Federalist Eight, it is the nature of war to increase the executive at the expense of the legislative authority. So I would agree with my colleague, Magan here, in saying that times of war really do increase the Commander-in-Chief role.
Not only in times of war, but also in times of national crisis, as seen with Franklin Delano Roosevelt's issuing of Executive Order 9066, which interned Japanese-Americans during World War II, which at the time was seen as controversial, but it expanded executive power because we were in a time of crisis after the attack on Pearl Harbor.
Questions? Mrs. Randall?
All of you did, but particularly you, and I'm sorry, your name again?
I'm Martha.
Okay, Martha, you talked about checks in place that caused people to be less worrisome about this. Besides the Supreme Court, what other checks are in place?
Well, on the President, there is the War Powers Act, so if the President wants to send troops to fight in any conflict, he has a sixty-day limit where those troops can be sent, and after that sixty days, Congress has to either approve and declare war, or they can, they have the authority to make the President pull troops.
Also, Congress can pull or cut funds for war, so they, for Black Hawk Down, I believe, in Somalia, they threatened to pull funds, and we pulled out immediately.
Really, funding is one of the biggest checks on all aspects of government. Congress has control, power of the purse, and that really affects every aspect of our government, so that control is really an effective check.
Great, thank you.
Ray?
The term Commander-in-Chief has, in practice, has changed dramatically from the days of George Washington to the present. Tell us how it's changed and why some of those changes have taken place.
Well, because our nation has grown and our government has grown, we have to, we have to change with our government. For example, well, not for example, but President Lincoln, he emancipated, emancipated the slaves, and he also blockaded the southern ports, and that was a risky move, but it was, even though it was controversial in the long run, and we, if we look back at it now, it was, it was risky, but it really did help America.
Well, in Brutus I, it states that there are many instances where the presidential power will be expanded, but very few instances where it is given back, and I believe this to be a correct statement. There are many instances where the Commander-in-Chief's power has been expanded, as seen with Lincoln in suspending the writ of habeas corpus and all of these things, which has allowed the Commander-in-Chief title to grow.
And every action that the President takes, that's a new precedent for executive behavior. So as it's expanded through the years, that precedent has been set and has continued to build off of it, so.
Kroner?
You seem comfortable with the idea that during a war or during national emergency, the President can take away freedoms for the public good. But what is the limit to that? And what checks are there that the President's going to take away freedoms that are too valuable to us?
Well, I believe that the media, as a fourth branch of government, is a really strong check on the President. With today's technology and the internet and television, I believe that it is really easy for people to be aware of what's going on because a lot of things are made publicly well-known, and I think that the media and public involvement in what's going on in the presidency is a really strong argument for one of the checks.
Along with what my colleague Vanage just said, in Federalist Fifty-One, people are the fountain of all authorities. Again, like another idea of a fourth branch, so that's another check, and the people can speak, they have the First Amendment, they have the freedom of speech, and then there's freedom of press, which my colleague was just saying, so there's those other checks too.
And as well as Congress and the Supreme Court also have checks over the President, so if the President does overstep his bounds, Congress or the Supreme Court can call the President into check and have his actions reversed.
And if the President doesn't want to, the courts do have subpoena power, which makes witnesses have to come to court and be part of that.
And really, the power of the President to not do whatever he wants, but take action, is afforded to him in the Constitution, where it gives him the ability to do the necessary
Questions? Anyone in the audience have a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Halligan? Would you please approach so we can make sure they hear you?
Just a question of the powers of the President as Commander-in-Chief. Would the so-called internet hill switch fall under that? Would it be reasonable to have the power of the President, the ability to turn off internet?
I don't believe that that should be allowed because in our First Amendment rights, we do have the right to free speech and free, freedom of the press, so I believe that anything, censoring media would be a violation to our rights.
Also, I think other countries like China, the internet is very closely monitored, so I think it's a great thing about America that we have the right to see everything on the internet and be informed. So I think that our freedom of speech and press ultimately needs to be protected.
Has press during times of war had complete protections under the First Amendment? Or are there examples where the media and the press have been limited?
Well, in the court case Nixon v. New York, it was, the freedom of the press was held up when Nixon tried to stop the publishing of some detrimental information that was going on during the Vietnam War, that the Pentagon Papers were going to print, and he tried to stop the printing of this. However, it was ruled that they could go ahead with the printing because he didn't have enough information and reason to stop the printing. So in that particular instance, the freedom of the press was held.
I also believe that Lincoln suspended some newspapers during the Civil War time that went against the Union.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll throw one last one at them. It's kind of contemporary. Tsars. Very Russian sounding, but how does the executive factor into this whole discussion on these executive tsars, and what's your view of tsars?
Well, tsars are controversial because they are presidential appointees that have not been confirmed by the Senate, and usually, other presidential appointees have to be confirmed by the Senate, so that's what makes them controversial, and many people think that they may be unconstitutional because of this.
However, in Federalist Seventy, it states that a feeble executive implies a feeble execution of government, so I do believe that sometimes in certain scenarios, it is necessary to have a President appoint people without senatorial improvement because to speed along process, to speed along the process and make quick enact decisions. Otherwise, we might not be in the position that we're in today.
Thank you very much. Traveling in April, is that correct?
Yes, we will travel out on April 29th, and we will compete the 30th, the first, and the second, I believe, hopefully, the second. The goal is to shoot for the top ten again this year, and I think that they have a chance if they're willing to keep up the energy over the next two months, so we'll see what happens. We have to work on our ums. Thirty-four of them, I was counting, but we'll work on that over the next two months.
Now, I'll give you this chance. Do you have fundraisers coming up that you'd like to mention?
We actually, we've done a lot of fundraising over the last six weeks, and we had a couple big items in the last several weeks go down, especially with the O'Sullivan's brunch yesterday. Thank you to anybody in the community that came out to and was able to, it was a great event. But really, right now, we're working with our letter drive that we have going right now, reaching out to the community that way, and depending on where that stands, that might be the end of our fundraising efforts, so we'll have to see where that stands.
Well, best of luck to you. Thank you. Our next item is the action item under student learning. Mrs. Randall?
Sorry, I'm pulling it up. It is recommended that the School Board approve the AP Psychology Resources for East and West High Schools at an estimated total cost of $25,000, as was presented and discussed at the February 14th Board Meeting, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Is there any Board discussion? Is there any community comment on this item? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Yes. Our next item is reports to the Board, and we'll begin with Student Services. Ms. Kwiatkowski will discuss open enrollment and habitual truancy.
Our state law changed, a bill was signed into law last May 12, 2010, that authorized school districts to deny a student's or revoke a student's open enrollment status based on them being defined as a habitual truant. So my recommendation tonight for you to consider is to amend our current open enrollment policy to incorporate this language. That's at the recommendation of the Department of Public Instruction, that we include this information in our policy. So on the overhead is a draft of what I'm recommending the Board to consider. If you look at the draft that you received in your packets, the first paragraph talks about the habitual student, or the habitual truancy of an open enrollment student applicant. Students have to be currently attending our school district, so that first paragraph targets students who are here under tuition waivers. So for example, a student who moves tomorrow on March 1st has missed the open enrollment, has missed the open enrollment period for our district, so they would be allowed to stay in... the open enrollment period for our district. So they would be allowed to stay in our district through the remainder of this year and next year under a tuition waiver until that time that they'd be eligible to apply for open enrollment for the following year. So that first paragraph talks specifically about, um, non-resident school boards determining that a student was habitually truant from the non-resident school district during the semester of attendance at the non-resident school district. So it talks about the fact that it's the non-resident district that they're attending. So it doesn't, this is, this does not include new applicants. We cannot review a student's, um, a new, a new open enrollment applicant's truancy patterns or attendance patterns. This is only for students that are currently attending our school district. The second paragraph is students that are currently here under open enrollment. So a student that has been accepted into our program via open enrollment, that we'd be able to assess their attendance and determine if they're habitual truant. We would use the state statute for habitual truancy, which is missing, um, five or more school days during a semester, which is where students are unexcused. And then included in this is just some information about the process for appealing any kind of, what a family would do to appeal. I did go through, um, and pull up some data this afternoon, kind of looking at what this would mean if we started applying this law. First of all, what the, um, language would do, it would just authorize us that opportunity to do it. We would have to, um, develop some procedures for how we would apply that because those decisions, obviously, we wouldn't want them made at the building level. They would be decisions that would be made at the district level if we were actually going to revoke someone's status, where we would ask, um, a school, a school specifically to talk about their reason for recommending it and what types of interventions actually occurred at the school level to address the habitual truancy. And we want that opportunity. Um, my recommendation is we have the opportunity to assess them on a case-by-case basis. I pulled out some information today looking at, um, students from the first semester of this year that were unverified for four or more class periods for five days during the semester. Um, we had two students that met that criteria at the elementary level where they were unverified for five or more days. And six, and these are just specifically open, current open enrollment students. And then we had six high school students that also met that, uh, criteria, that they were unverified during four or more class periods. As far as students that were on tuition waivers currently this semester, we had, or this year, we had four elementary students and three high school kids. So those would be students that we would pull out and we would assess that. Kind of looked at those kids. I can tell you right now, you know, based on what, um, one of the students I know, one of the students is recently, um, we're dealing with some other issues where it's understandable, um, why that would, why that would come up. So just having that opportunity to assess on a case-by-case basis versus putting language in, that would define it in our policy would not be my recommendation.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Ray?
Um, you also provided us with a copy of the current policy 5113. And, um, did you identify where, I, I'm guessing we're talking about taking this language that's up on the screen now and simply inserting that into policy five, 5113?
Correct. That would be my recommendation.
And at what specific location within the policy?
My recommendation, I believe that there's some letters and it would be around letter G. Does that make sense?
Currently on page five of six.
Page five of six, looking at, um, I would recommend that, that we would do it under F. E and F are both transportation. So G would be habitual truant.
Did you have any other questions, Mr. Ray?
Yeah, and I'm, I apologize because the way that I'm looking at it on the screen, it's, uh, I mean, I've seen the whole page at one time. But in essence, this section of the current policy that relates to open enrollment students, it would just become the last
Correct.
portion of that part of the policy.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
Just based on, on your explanation right now, would it be more appropriate to make it a guideline? An administrative guideline?
I think because it's state statute, my recommendation would be that we incorporate it into our policy because the, um, ability to do that is driven by a change in state law. So that would be my recommendation. That's, um, what DPI is, is recommending is that school districts update policy.
Okay, 'cause, um, when you were talking about a particular instance that you're aware of and that it's understandable why those absences were existing, then was that student then not, um, designated as truant?
This, by adding this language, it gives the district the authority to revoke a student's status. And then I think that we as a district would have to come up with some administrative guidelines how, for how we would make those decisions. So in this, in the policy, my recommendation is that we incorporate our authority as a school district to make that decision and then provide some parameters or guidelines in an administrative guideline.
Okay. Because I'm, you know, I'm pretty black and white. So when I'm thinking, okay, if we put it in here in policy as opposed to guidelines, if a student is labeled truant, um, then the board would need to take action.
I, I don't think that this recommend, it gives us the authority to do that. I don't think that we would, I don't, it, it wouldn't be my intent that it would require us to revoke a student. It just authorizes us to do that.
Okay. And then it would be, the recommendation would come from your office?
Correct. That would be my recommendation for an administrative guideline is that decisions just for equity purposes and to make sure that there's a system of checks and balances. And then we've done due diligence in trying
Okay.
to come up with some interventions for a family or a child.
Yeah. But, but in the event that they truly are truant and there's nothing, no services here that we can offer to help that, then we have that option.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Crowner?
I thought I understood what it said in here until you started talking about tuition waiver students because it doesn't mention that. Does this paragraph only cover tuition waiver students? Or does it also cover students for applying from another school district?
It only
Gives you the authority to analyze their attendance record?
It does not give us the authority to do that. It only, if, if you look at the language in here, it talks about students' attendance at the non-resident school district. So it would only be students who are currently attending our school district and are newly applying for open enrollment. And the students that fit into that category are students that are here under tuition waivers.
Any other questions? I would ask that when this comes back before us, we receive the entire current policy with the addition so that we can see exactly where it's going to fit in. And I guess I had originally, I was going to suggest that this perhaps should be under, um, Section B decisional criteria because the first line says the board will consider as part of their criteria. But if this does not pertain to non-resident applications, then I guess that might not be correct. I just, I'm, like Mr. Crowner, a little confused as to exactly which students this applies to. And if there's any circumstances under which it applies to newly applying students, I would ask that you consider whether it should be in that Section B when it's presented to us.
Sure.
I think we need to clarify the language. If we need to add current, but just to make sure it's, because if there's three people that have questions on the board, it's not clear enough. So we'll clarify it.
Thank you. Mr. Ray?
And just as a suggestion, if, and, and I would seek clarification of this first, but if it's accurate that that first paragraph only refers to tuition waiver students, and perhaps after the words habitual truancy of open enrollment student applicant, there could be a parenthetical statement that just says, uh, tuition waiver students. Uh, at the same time, I say that with some caution because I don't want to limit the circumstances if it is meant to be more encompassing, more, more broad or more all-encompassing than that. So that's why I, I, my suggestion that, just to verify that that's the true scope of that language. And if it is, maybe then that would be a clarification that could be added without changing the meaning or the impact.
Any other board question or comment? Is there any community comment on this item? And thank you very much. We will anticipate seeing this back here in a modified form.
Thank you.
Our next report is the superintendent's report on the Montessori school.
Thank you. The window, um, is closed for accepting applications, not only for the Montessori school, but for the STEM, TOSA STEM school at Wilson, as well as open enrollment. And I'll just share some numbers on where we're at. In particular with the Montessori school, uh, we're going to be working this week and through the lottery process, Mr. Chanan, Mr. Hoise, um, and some others, we, we have 143 applications for the Montessori program, uh, which far surpassed, I guess, any of our, our expectations administratively. Of the 143, 58 are currently attending district schools. Forty-three are non-attending residents and 34 are unspecified 4K students that, um, we haven't, with 4K is the tricky part because we're not real sure. But we've looked at, looked at some of the siblings, uh, where the siblings had gone and tried to make some determinations that way. So looking at the grade configurations, we do have a pretty widespread, obviously, most of the kids are, um, most of the numbers are at JK and SK. We have 57 at JK, 21 at the SK, 24 at first grade, 17 at second grade, 12 at third grade, seven at fourth grade, and five at fifth grade. So looking at the, um, what we're going to have to go through is look specifically at the non-attending resident students, the grades, the grade levels of all the students and whether or not we can, I mean, we have, we have enough students to do three classes. Uh, but whether we can structure it with the grade levels, that's part of our discussion we'll have to have this week and what's going to be an appropriate way to do it. But, um, certainly the, the amount of applications tells us one thing, that I, I strongly believe people are looking for different options and choices. And, um, now it's finding a way to manage it. And I think it's an important, important piece to point out. As we talked about the Montessori program, early on, the intent was to bring, not only just offer options, but financially in the times that we're at to look at how do we, how do we fund a program like this? And when you look at 43 non-attending resident students, if they're all full-time students, um, that is somewhere in the neighbor of 450, neighborhood of $450,000, just through the enrollment procedure. One of the main things we need to do under the current school funding mechanism is to increase resident enrollment. And that's where we get revenue and aid, in particular, aid to, to offset. So, um, there's still some things up in the air and how it all plays out with the budget. But I feel pretty confident that we're able to, to move forward. But as we work through that, I'll make sure I get information to the board and the community and notification to all of the Montessori applicants as well. For the STEM charter school, we have 42 applications for that program, um, for a very limited number of seats this year. As we look at next year with that expanding, I'm assuming we will get more applications. But 42, I think, is one of the highest numbers we've had in the past couple of years. Um, it's higher than I expected for this year. And then for open enrollment applications, we have 1,592 applications for open enrollment into the district. Um, and the grade levels for those are, are spread out. One number I looked at is, one of the things we've been looking at is, um, the options for virtual schools. We're losing, um, open enrollment out, 45 students are, uh, applying for open enrollment out of our district for virtual schools. And of those, 40 of those are in grade six through 12. Um, one of the pieces we've been looking at, or one of the educational opportunities we've been looking at in the district is how do we keep our students and offer those type of services? This is, that's the highest number we've ever had applying in one year for virtual schools. And, um, my intent is to set up a meeting with all 40 of those parents, grade six through 12, and see what we can do to keep them in our school district and offer that type of program for them. Obviously, there's a lot of work to do before we do that and a lot of information to come to the board. But, um, that number concerns me because I think we can do a good job, uh, virtually with those, those students as well. So right now, looking at our class sizes, I don't anticipate a great number of open enrollment openings. Uh, JK numbers are, are lower, but this time of year, they're always a little bit lower. And it looks like we're adding open enrollment. Weekly, we go through updates on those open enrollment or the class size updates. And, um, at this point, they really don't mean a whole lot. But other than JK, there's not too many open seats throughout the rest of the district because of our resident enrollment being higher. Um, I'll stop there for a second if there's any questions on either of those.
Mr. Meyer?
Uh, Dr. Erdl, I suspect that not everyone is aware of your, your background with online programs. Um, will you, um, describe a little bit for folks what you've done in the past with those types of programs?
I was involved in the development of an online, statewide online school. Well, it eventually went state. It started, um, a local, uh, virtual school and it still is in existence. So I think it's one of the eight that are recognized by the state as online virtual programs that people can open enroll to. So I've had some experience with that. And that was about eight or nine, 10 years ago that, that was developed. Um, we've offered online classes, but I think we can really look into offering an online virtual program that can be very competitive with any other ones in the state. And if I look at it, it's a way to keep our resident kids in, offer online courses for our currently attending students that are not interested in full-time, full-time virtual schools, as well as increase revenues through open enrollment and attracting students. If you look at, um, I just did the calculation of the number of open enrollment applications from sixth grade through 12. It's 793. I don't know how many of those would be interested if Wauwataosa had a virtual school, but would there be a way to attract some of those students and offer some kind of virtual program? Um, we're in different times now when it comes to revenue as well. But I think we can offer a program and, and, but that, that's a ways off. But for our students, I don't think it should be a ways off. If we're going to lose 40 students, that's, that's a lot of revenue going out the door that we're paying to have our students educated by somebody that I feel like we can ultimately do better with.
Well, I asked the question because I, I know it is, it is your practice to move quickly. And, um, especially in this area, you are, you are not a novice, that you are well experienced in this type of program. Um, so I, I think we can rest assured that your proposal will be well considered and, um, well considered when it comes to us. So I encourage you, as, as for my opinion, to, um, press ahead on this.
Mrs. Randall, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. Um, I'm just going to ask you to go over a couple of the numbers again, if you don't mind. You, um, 143 total applications for Montessori. And what was the first 58? Those are current?
Those are current, students currently attending SK through fifth grade. So the current number we have currently attending that have applied, 10 SK, 15 first grade, 14 second grade,
Oh.
10 third grade, five fourth and four fifth.
Okay. So they are
They are in our current schools.
District. Okay. Um, then, um,
And just one other note, of those students, 15 of those have previously attended Montessori schools.
Okay. And we are not opening this to open enrollment?
We are not.
None of our charter schools are open to open enrollment
Correct.
At this time. Right. Okay. So our intent is to draw in our residents who are not currently utilizing our system.
Correct.
Obviously, and especially when we can offer them a program at that young age. Um, now, I know we talked about the criteria, and like you said, I, I'm sure we surpassed it, of having at least 20 in a classroom. You know, it doesn't, not necessarily the age, you know, all 20 second graders, but
Right.
So that you would be setting up, uh, that's the work you said you need to do yet?
Right. We're going to be working through it this week. And
Okay.
The lottery process, I believe, is next Monday. Mr. Chanan? Okay. You have a date for it, but.
So, um, using the lottery, how many will we limit it to? Or, or you don't know that yet?
Well, I, I guess the target number is if we can put, have 25 in each section, if we can configure the grades right. I think part of the process too is those that are chosen first. Um, we need to notify them. They need to accept and commit. And then if some people have a change of heart since they applied, so we have to go through that whole process to make sure we don't, um, try to set something up and, and we don't have enough people in certain grade levels to, to have the right configurations.
Right. Right. Um, and when we got reports And when we got reports on the Montessori, were there discussions about maximum class size for effective delivery of the program?
Like Dr. Erdl said, we're targeting that mid-20s range. We've looked at the numbers of the applicants so far and the grade levels that they're at, and we think we're probably going to be able to achieve about 26 students per classroom, you know, multi-age range. We've discussed a maximum. You know, I don't think we would want to go as high as 30, but the reality is these are also going to be, especially with the junior kindergarten class, the junior kindergarten SK, they're also going to have a second adult in that room because it's planned to be one teacher and one support staff for the classroom. So they could be a little bit larger than our traditional early elementary classrooms because they're, they're planned to have extra support. But I don't know that we had a discussion about an absolute maximum, but-
We had a lot of discussions about the minimum.
We had a lot of discussions about that.
Yeah, I know, and now here we are, here we are at the other end, which is great, which is great, but, so staffing-wise, do we have staff that are interested in becoming certified Montessori?
Current staff?
Mm-hmm.
We may have a current staff member, I think one contacted about that possibility, but they're not currently certified, and that's a multi-year process.
Okay.
We've gotten a lot of, a lot of interest, both myself and Dean have fielded calls from people who are interested in applying and already certified. So my assumption is that we would not be hiring anyone from within the district just because I don't know that there's someone who needs certification on staff.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Mr. Cronin?
Yeah, the earlier answers were kind of vague. If you have the right age groupings, you will have a maximum of three classrooms, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And my recollection of the staffing, won't there be two staff members in each room? A teacher and an aide? Wasn't that the normal setup?
A teacher and aide, although they won't necessarily be, the aide may not be full-time in each room. So for example, with the JK-SK class, the junior kindergarten portion is going to go halfway through the day, so that aide will likely be half-time. So we're going to try to, but yeah, the plan is basically an aide per classroom, or an aide and a half.
Right, thank you.
Board members, anything further? Is there any community comment on this portion of the superintendent's report? And we'll move on to the second item under superintendent's report, the budget and legislative update.
Well, there's, there's a lot going on. I think we all know there's a lot going on with legislative action and the budget. There, unfortunately, until probably Wednesday, Wednesday evening, we have a full interpretation of what the budget bill will contain. We don't have a lot more information, but I think there's some, some pieces of legislation. Obviously, they're going to have an impact in what we're preparing for. A couple of different pieces have been brought up that we're just not sure, we just don't know what impact it's going to have on the district. And it, one of them is, as we're discussing the open enrollment legislation, that's going to be probably coming back in a couple of months to have a new policy. The, there's language, there's a bill out there that I'm assuming is going to be approved, that one of the aspects of it is that students are allowed at any time during the school year. First of all, it's going to lengthen the window. So our open enrollment window would still be open. I don't know that that benefits us greatly if we already have 1,500 applications. I don't know that we're going to get a whole lot more by extending it a couple of months, but one other one that is going to be impacted, which also speaks to the virtual school, is that virtual schools will be allowed to, students will be allowed to open enroll to virtual schools designated by the Department of Public Instruction at any time during the year. And I guess the other part is I want to be out in front of that as, as much as we possibly can, because if people can make decisions at any time in the year, I want them making decisions to stay with us or come to us. But, so we'll see how that all plays out. The one other piece, we did reach and, we signed off on an agreement with the association for layoffs, so as we saw a lot of other school districts laying off, some laying off their full staffs, some laying off half, some doing a lot of different configurations with layoffs, we are able to continue to follow our bargaining, our past practice and our collective bargaining agreement that the layoff date is in June 1st, so we have time to deal with the budget as it comes out. We are anticipating a loss of revenue cap authority, somewhere of 4.2 to 4.3 million dollars. If, we're expecting a $200 increase, state law says 275, but we know that we've been cut back to 200 this past year, but we're anticipating a minus 500 per student revenue cap authority, and that's where that amount, that impact is on our district. The other pieces that are out there, and the Chapter 220 program, if that's eliminated, that's a $3.7 million tax impact. So we've been advocating that they do not eliminate that, that hopefully they understand that the impact of the elimination of the Chapter 220 program is that the significance is $3.7 million on the local levy, and I believe our district is the largest player in the, in the 220 program still, even though we've reduced that over time. Open enrollment, there's been some discussion about open enrollment going up, the amount that districts will receive per student for open enrollment. I personally have been advocating for full funding for open enrollment. When we look at what's happening with school choice and voucher schools and the concepts behind that, and saying, we're at, if we're educating or if we lose a student, why should we be able to retain money for that student if they're being educated by another district and vice versa for those coming in? Obviously, that has some impact on some of our larger urban districts that are having students go out, but I do believe that it, it should go up. If that amount was raised even by $1,000, that's $1.3 million in revenue that comes directly to our district, not through the tax rolls of Wauwautosa. And the JK funding, that piece has been out there. There's been some discussion about elimination of JK funding. I know Luther Olson made the comment, who was the head of the Senate Education Committee, that before we get rid of JK, we should get rid of the senior year. And his belief on the impact that JK has much more educational impact than the senior year, but realistically, Wauwautosa's had junior kindergarten since 1950, in the 1950s it started, so it wasn't, it certainly wasn't done in Wauwautosa for the funding, and it was done for the right reasons, and it would be unfortunate if there's some kind of change to junior kindergarten. We, I think we, at least I, fully support junior kindergarten and what it means and what it brings to our kids. And I think just another point that needs to be made also regarding the legislative issues, is what has occurred in the Wauwautosa School District in, just a compliment to the, to the staff in our district and their approach to the protests and how that all played out. We had, the three days where the largest protests were taking place in Madison, our attendance rate was lower than average, and in, on one day, some of our staff felt strongly that they wanted to go there and were allowed to use their contractual personal days to attend. So I think it's a compliment to our, our school district and the way our staff has handled this for the most part, and what they've continued to do and send a message that we're going to continue educating our kids in our school district, and I'm, I'm pretty proud to be part of the school district right now. So I think that's a lot of credit to the 1,000 employees that we have here.
Board members, any questions or comments? Is there any community comment on this agenda item?
Sorry, I did, I had one quick question. When you talked about eliminating 220 program, that wouldn't mean that the kids that are currently here under 220 would no longer be funded immediately?
Well, that's the concern, that's the concern we've had for, I know, for six years, and we've been putting together papers and really trying to let people know, not only the moral impact of it and the, the social impact of it of saying, you can't attend, you're, you're out, but the financial piece is, is really big for all of the suburban districts. There's another part of the 220 program that involves intra-district in the, in MPS, that they've been kind of moot on and haven't said a whole lot about it, but that's, that's been our concern, that somehow they would just cut Chapter 220 funding. And Chapter 220, Chapter 220 funding, I think it's important to note that we don't get spendable revenue for those students, it's just a tax reduction. And if that's eliminated, there's no tax reduction and automatically goes on the rolls, and that would be, unless they said you have to lose those kids and the kids have to leave, but you don't get that impact because the 300 students are spread throughout the district in all different classrooms. So we can say, okay, all those students, 300 students, you're out, we're not going to reduce any staff because of that loss. So there's no offsetting way to reduce expenditures if that's eliminated. Similar to, the example is when we added 220, or 270 open enrollment students, we added those students throughout the district without increasing staff at all. So if we can show it one way to, to change that, we, we're not going to be able to reduce staff, so that's where that offsetting piece just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I mean, I guess this is the first I've ever, ever heard of actually sending the kids back who are currently attending here.
And I don't think that's ever been said by anybody, but as superintendents, when we meet and discuss about this, that's our concern, that unless people are educated about the program, because there are a lot of new people involved-
Right.
And we got to make sure that they understand that you can't just eliminate it. Our suggestion was if you're going to do something, phase it out over time, so there's not a major tax impact, and the students that are here can continue through. And I think the district has been taking steps to do that on our own without accepting new, new Chapter 220 students. So it's, I mean, we're already in process, even though it's 13 years down the road by the way we're doing it. I think it could be accelerated and be successful that way, but our hope is they just don't chop it and-
Thanks.
Any other board member question or comment?
Well, I anticipate that this will be on our agendas for the foreseeable future. Thank you for the update today.
I can see forever.
And we'll await developments in Madison. There's now one last opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Again, if anyone would like, would like to make a comment, please approach the microphone and state your name and address prior to making your comment.
Tucking his shirt up.
We're Mike and Judy Doyle. We live at 2518 North 81st Street, and we want to thank the board for recognizing our $2,000 scholarship donation to the schools. $1,000 will be given to a worthy Wauwautosa West student, and $1,000 will be given to a Wauwautosa East graduate of this year. Our selection criteria, we wanted to base around community service. They, the students needed to fill out a application that talked about how their community has supported them thus far in their life and how they think their secondary education will help them support the community that they eventually live in when they're done. It's open to students who choose to go to a technical, technical school or a four-year college. And the hardest part was picking a grade point average that we wanted to have the applicants qualify for, because we had to think about Jack and think, now, let's see. We wouldn't want to do a scholarship that he wouldn't be able to qualify for himself. So we picked a criteria as far as grade point average that quite a few kids would be able to fit it into that, into that range. Our scholarship committee, or our selection committee for the scholarship is made up of business representative, John Waszkowicz, educational representative, Mr. Mark Carter, who was actually Jack's principal over at McKinley School when he was there, and our community representative is Buffy Stefan, Stefan, who served on the school board with me. So they have the applications now, and those awards will be given at the corresponding awards banquet at East and West, and Dennis Mahoney, who was Jack's principal at Longfellow Middle School, will be, will do the presentation. It has never been so much fun to give money away, and we are just so grateful to those students, those seniors, and actually, some of the younger kids too, but especially this class of seniors, and we wanted some way to honor them for their kindness and their support of us over the past four years, so it means a lot.
We debated whether to say anything and make the meeting go even longer. But we, we did want to recognize the kids and all that they've given to us, and I think it's a reflection on their parents and the community that raised the kids also, that they're such a warm and caring and really special group of kids.
Thank you again.
Is there any other community comment at this time?
Then it would be appropriate now for a motion to adjourn this public meeting and reconvene into executive session pursuant to Section, excuse me, Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, in order for the school board to discuss retirements. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Mrs. Glonty, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
We'll reconvene in approximately 10 minutes. Thank you.